Good evening. This meeting will come to order. Let's please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you all for coming out this evening. I think before we start, I'd like to address the comment that we had at the end of our last meeting from public, and I think we have at least one comment online here as well. Actually, we'll get to that one on number four. But the one comment that we had was a question regarding if we purchase this new scoreboard, whether or not sufficient people will be trained that it will be able to be used, or whether it will be only like one person who's going to be able to use it, and they must be available all the time. And I've been assured that there will be a protocol and a plan developed to create training for the appropriate number of people, so that when we need the facility, that we're going to be able to use the facility, because there will be someone available who's been properly trained to use it. So I hope that answers the question. So at this point, can I have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Any opposed? Motion carries. At this point, we're asked if there's any public comments on the agenda items only. Anyone from the audience? No, I think we have an online comment or two. Who's this from? And this is from Bobby LaFever, from Watts Township, and the question is regarding having businesses sponsor the football stadium, can the board explain if the new funds will pay for yearly maintenance of the football field, and if the sports teams and marching band will also benefit directly from the sponsorship? And there's another comment there as well. Will the sponsorship of the stadium help to prevent tax increases on taxpayers who live in the district? Also, can the board assure taxpayers that sponsors will not have say over curriculum that is taught to students? So is that something we can answer tonight, Dr. Fox?
Yeah, I think so. I think we can go ahead and take the latter part of the question first. In terms of sure that sponsors won't have a say over the curriculum, that is correct. The board has the say over curriculum taught within the school. So sponsors and having a sponsorship and having the ability to have agreements, that is all within the scope of board policy. And no, they do not have a say in the curriculum. But having the ability to have partners, to be able to have those project-based life experiences are outstanding. But no, they will not have a say in the taught curriculum within the elements of our schools. In terms of taxpayers, would this increase taxpayers within the district or alleviate taxpaying? The idea behind this particular agreement that we're looking at at the agenda item tonight is an agreement in order to be able to rename the field, Maguire Ford Field at Blackhawk Stadium. And as a result of that agreement, to be able, they would turn around Maguire Ford and Company to establish and provide a board that would be in the replacement for the current scoreboard, would be a video board. That would not eliminate any need for, that would not be a tax relief, but rather, there would be no tax money used to pay for that enhancement to our district. So I hope that answers that question. And the other question regarding having businesses pay for the football stadium and its maintenance. Maintenance on the football stadium, or I'm not going to say the word football stadium, on the Blackhawk Stadium, the maintenance of the turf currently right now is done by our maintenance staff and team, at which time they circulate and groom the field according to the FieldTurf Operational Maintenance Manual. But every year, we also get GMAGS tested of the field. That's typical for a lot of fields in play. And there also is some maintenance that we do prescribe to, such as using magnets to pick up any shards of metal that may be there, and making sure that it goes through, you know, the proper cycle of the cleanings that occur. And that's done by a company that was recommended by FieldTurf. And that's a small amount. I want to say it's like $2,500 a year, if not less than that. But no, there's always opportunity for more sponsorships, but we want to be purposeful in those sponsorships and any agreements, and making sure that it aligns with the mission and vision and enhances opportunities for students.
Thank you, Dr. Fox. I think also, and that question had to do with whether the marching band and other organizations would benefit from this. And absolutely, I think we're all excited. Hopefully, you know, we have, you know, marching band pictures up, you know, live in person or whatever. And even now that we have a turf field and our track is amazing, we started, I believe this year, correct me if I'm wrong, hosting some, you know, playoff games to other districts and other things. I think when other districts see this and see what an opportunity is and how valuable it is, as far as what value it brings to the observers, spectators, I think we'll have more schools wanting to pay to hold events at our district, because we have amazing facilities that other districts can benefit from. So yeah, this is not strictly an athletic thing at all. So I hope that answers your questions. At this point, number five is a discussion on the potential sponsorship and the naming of the stadium. I know we discussed this at length at the last board meeting, but again, I'll turn it over to Dr. Fox, and discussion is open to community members as well. So, Dr. Fox, board members, community members.
Thanks. I think there was a couple of questions last time. We just want to make sure that those questions are answered. And the one was, will STSG, which is the sign vending provider that was picked by Maguire's Ford, would the warranty transfer to the school district? And the answer is yes. It will be in writing. It will be a seven-year parts and labor warranty that will transfer to the school district, and that will be completed in writing. There was a conversation a little bit about 10-millimeter pixels versus eight or smaller. It was recommended that the lower 10-millimeter be used, because it would, the bulbs have different three-color sharing versus the one bulb. And the 10-millimeter, there are no colors that are shared within the LEDs. Sure, yeah, absolutely. This is Callis Wexler. She's done an excellent job as a member of the Blackhawk Foundation, the vice president, and has done a tremendous job researching it. And she actually put together these notes, so I'm not going to steal the thunder here, and she'll do a better job explaining it.
So the reasoning behind the 10-millimeter pixels versus eight or smaller, first is a significant price difference. But when you use lower than 10-millimeter, you have to use a different LED bulb, which is lower quality. The display would have a decreased lifespan and a higher rate of failure. And the bulb that they would use would have to be sharing three different colors versus with the 10-millimeter, each bulb is responsible for one color. I'm not exactly sure how it all works, but one color versus three, so there's, I don't know, one-third the chance that it would break down as quickly or whatever. The 10-millimeter, he said, are tried and true and built the best for, you can for outdoor use. And digital billboards that you see when you're driving around are 16-millimeter. So these would be smaller, so more precise pictures than all the road signs that you see that are digital. So did you want me to keep going in these notes?
Yeah, absolutely. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Rachel, or yeah, Rachel, sorry. Leanne, you had asked about the size, the size comparison. Ours would be nine and a half feet by 18 and a half feet viewable area. The one at Cumberland Valley's football stadium is 18 by 32. And that soccer stadium at Cumberland Valley is 14 by 24. So that one is pretty comparable. But of course, Cumberland Valley's football stadium is a lot bigger than ours, too. So in reading, it said that they installed the digital scoreboard so that they could host state championship matches. So that's literally why they said that they got both of those signs at Cumberland Valley. And just for reference, an NBA scoreboard is 16 by 28 feet. Accessibility, we had talked about it. You didn't get here in time. But we said that one computer would control the sign when it's operating. The software can be installed on multiple computers. And to make the software active, you need the USB dongle plug into the computer. So all of those that use it could have their own computer with all of their own templates and player information for their specific teams. And then the internal system to share the USB dongle, and he suggested it be just, you know, in the press box or in a lockbox or something, so, because the computer would have to be directly connected into that. But they also said that additional licenses could be purchased for $1,000.
Before you came in, we answered your question that you had posed at the end of the last meeting, that there's going to be a training protocol put into place. We're going to make sure that there's more than like one person that knows how to run the facility, knows how to run it, and can be trained. So when we want to use it, someone will be available to use it.
If you don't mind, I wanted to explain myself with that. Because with wrestling, we had a camera that we used to use for the gymnasium when we were in COVID. That camera never worked properly when broadcasting our wrestling matches to, you know, because as parents, we weren't allowed to always be in the gymnasium watching the matches during COVID. Then also, during track meets, there was only one person that could use the camera at the end, at the finish line. And we had many times during track meets where our students PR'd. And it didn't count, because Mr. Fisher wasn't available to use the camera at the finish line. And when you PR, you can't count it with a hand timer. So our students missed out on PRs. They missed out on breaking school records, state records. And that wasn't just, you know, that's embarrassing for our students. So I want to make sure that if we're bringing this technology in for not only our athletes, but for our academics, that there are multiple facilitators that can use this equipment, and it's not just two or three people. And if those two or three people aren't available, then we're SOL. And this is a chunk of money that, you know, or a nice chunk of a technology that can't be utilized for all of us and for all of our students.
No, I respect that. And please, if you start to see that happening, let us know. Because absolutely, that would be totally counterproductive. So please, let us know if that happens. The goal would be for that to not to ever happen. Any discussion from the board?
I have a thought to bring up. I don't know if this is the right place to do it, because I'm thinking the wording of the motion is incorrect. Do we do that during the discussion on the wording of the motion? I think it needs, because I don't, so before I get into it, is that the time for me to discuss, or do you want me to do it now during this part? Okay, so I'm thinking it says a motion to approve a sponsorship agreement with Maguire Ford and the Blackhawk Foundation to rename the stadium. The Blackhawk Foundation doesn't have the ability to rename our stadium. So I think what you want that to do is to remove, to rename the stadium to Maguire Ford Field, and put that after it's donated to the school. We would then be renaming the stadium in exchange for that video board. Isn't that correct? Because I don't think the Blackhawk Foundation has the ability to rename our stadium, which is what it's saying here.
I pondered that for a minute.
Okay.
Leanne, do you have a suggestion for rewording?
Yeah, so exactly what it says there now, but say, a motion to approve a sponsorship agreement with Maguire Ford Incorporated and the Susquehanna Blackhawk Foundation, okay, for the full price and installation of a video board that will be then donated to Susquehanna School District from the Blackhawk Foundation in exchange for the renaming of the stadium as Maguire Ford. So basically, where it says to rename the stadium field would go after the end of the sentence, if that makes sense. Because then that we're the ones that are renaming it, if I'm correct in that. Because I don't think that, I don't think we can pass a motion for the Blackhawk Foundation to rename our field.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I got it.
So all it is is just sort of moving the renaming of the stadium after we get the board, after the board comes to us.
Good catch.
Any other comments or discussion from the board?
I just have one other one then. And then, I know the motion doesn't always tend to get into the weeds of all of that, but last week, we discussed that the naming of the field would not be in perpetuity, right? Like, if the video board goes away, it was, there was a length of time, wasn't it? The life of the board or whatever. Because we have down on there, the conditions of the agreement will be reviewed. That stuff will all be covered underneath that agreement.
It absolutely will. That'll all be, yes, absolutely. That'll all be exercised in a sample agreement I have here as well, I could pass around. But the actual agreement itself will pass through an intense review by our solicitor.
So do we need to have that in the motion, that this is pending the agreement being reviewed by, instead of saying the terms and conditions, say pending the terms and conditions of the agreement being reviewed by the district solicitor? Or not? I don't
I think it's implied, but I don't mind that.
Okay.
I would agree with Leanne. I don't think pending is implied. And do we also need to put in the motion the length of term?
Sorry. I agree with Leanne. I don't know that pending is implied. And do we also need to put in there the length of time according to the agreement?
Is that in the agreement?
The length of time?
Again, the agreement has not been reviewed fully by the solicitor yet and/or fully executed. But the term would be 20 years, commencing on the date of the agreement, or for the duration of the life of the video board, whichever is shorter.
I'm thinking, let me know what your thoughts are. But I'm thinking if it's in the agreement and the agreement is being reviewed, I think, as we've read that agreement, I think we can, I think the pending will cover them agreeing to that and us agreeing to that, that timeframe. I don't know that we have to go into every detail of the agreement in this motion.
Well, I think how it reads, though, is it's just saying execution of the final document. Nowhere does it, in the motion, does it say that it's in accordance with the agreement document. It just says the terms and conditions, but it doesn't outline that. To me, I think when you read it, I don't know, maybe to other people, it's just saying, it's saying it will be reviewed, but it doesn't say that how that's
Agreed to by the solicitor?
Right.
Reviewed and approved or agreed to by the solicitor?
Right. It's just saying he's reviewing it.
Right.
But it doesn't say what we're
Well, we're saying we want
What we're saying we want and agreeing to.
It says we are approving the agreement. The solicitor doesn't have to approve the agreement. Like, so, first line is we're approving the agreement.
Okay.
Does that, is that, we're going to approve it tonight unless the solicitor reviews it and puts up a red block and says, wait a minute. So I think, does that work?
Yeah, okay.
Any other discussion? All right, so I'm going to try to read this motion, number six. I need a motion to approve a sponsorship agreement with Maguire Ford Incorporated and the Susquehanna Blackhawk Foundation to, in exchange for renaming, Blackhawk Foundation to rename? Go ahead.
So I would like to see the motion reworded to state, a motion to approve a sponsorship agreement with Maguire Ford Incorporated and the Susquehanna Blackhawk Foundation for the full purchase and installation of a video board that will be then donated to the Susquehanna School District from the Blackhawk Foundation in exchange for the renaming of the stadium as Maguire Ford Field at Blackhawk Stadium. That's the way it's worded on there?
It's worded correctly. It's the Blackhawk Stadium, we're renaming.
So in exchange for renaming the field as Maguire Ford Field at Blackhawk Stadium. Okay. Would you like me to repeat that, Dee?
Did you get that?
I think for point of clarification, in exchange for renaming the field within the stadium to be called Maguire Ford Field at Blackhawk Stadium, to then be called? Sorry, maybe I added too many words in there.
And then Dee, the rest of that is pending the terms and conditions of the agreement, which will be reviewed by the district solicitor prior to the execution of the final document. And could you, would you reread the entire motion, please, Dee?
A motion to approve a sponsorship agreement with Maguire Ford, Inc., and the Susquehanna Blackhawk Foundation for the full purchase and installation of a video board that will then be donated to the Susquehanna School District from the Blackhawk Foundation in exchange for renaming the field within the stadium to then be called Maguire Ford Field at Blackhawk Stadium. Pending the terms and conditions of the agreement will be reviewed by the district solicitor prior to the execution of the final document.
So moved. Do I get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Any no's? Okay, then the motion passes. And I would like to say to Maguire Ford on behalf of the board, and to the Blackhawk Foundation on behalf of the board, thank you so much for your generous contribution. And I'm sure it's going to, I'm sure it's going to bear great fruit for our district, and we're thrilled to be in partnership with you. Thank you very much. Any administrative reports?
The only report I have is, thank you, everybody, for coming out, and thank you to those who provided public comments. Thank you for your willingness to come to a special board meeting tonight in December and rearrange all of your schedules. There is a fourth, fifth, and sixth grade concert going on right now. So as we exit, if you want to hear some holiday music, certainly it's a great opportunity. That's why parking was a little concerning. But lots of great events going on. So I'll take this opportunity to wish everyone a very merry and happy holidays and an incredible new year. Thank you for all that you do, all the hours you put in, all the research, feedback. It's great and appreciated for what you do to the community. I'd like to echo what Dr. Jones says. Thank you to Maguire Ford, your partnership and willingness to come to meetings and present, your willingness to be a part of our community and to donate this outstanding contribution to our community that will allow us to grow in and continue to have those experiences for our students. And thank you to the Blackhawk Foundation. It's definitely, hopefully, the start of many incredible opportunities here within our district. And all the work that they've done, coming off of the ugly sweater Jingle Bell Jog that was had. So we had really great weather for that. So thank you.
And if I can add one thing, thank you for all of your hard work and dedication. It is outstanding.
Any other board reports? All right. At this point, while entertaining, any public comments for anyone wishing to speak at all on anything, whether it was on the agenda or not? Anyone in the audience?
I do have a question.
Excellent.
That was brought up last week that I didn't quite understand. I think last week you had said something about the cyber school, what the district pays out for cyber school. Was I correct in hearing that's a $3 million bill? And what exactly does that entail? What is that $3 million? What does that go to?
All right, let's
Because I have assumptions of what that $3 million is. Is it for Susquehanna Cyber? Is it for the charter cyber, the outside charter cyber? Or is that going to private schools?
The reason we're all smiling is because it is just a huge bone of contention for all of us. And we could spend all night talking about it, but we would like to.
It's never really been broken down.
It's a great question.
When you bring up a figure like that, that's concerning. And I don't think a majority of the district, and I know not too many people watch the school board meetings, I don't think too many people understand what that $3 million truly is.
That's a great question. Probably several of us will chime in. Who wants to go first? Leanne, go first. But I will just, I will say this to Mrs. Priscilla. Even if we decided we didn't want to pay it, they take that money out before we ever see it. So that's not even an option. I'll just throw that out as well. But Leanne.
I'll just, this has been kind of a little pet project of mine, but it is going, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Fox, if I speak out of school, but it is going to cyber charter schools that are not affiliated with Susquehanna Cyber. So we are, through a complicated formula, assigned a tuition price when any student attends a cyber charter, a PA public cyber charter school, such as Commonwealth Connections Academy or others like them. And that fee changes whether the student is a regular education student or one that has special education needs. The tuition costs are different. And that figure is based on the number of students that reside in the Susquehanna School District that are attending those institutions. And it is a very large bill, as you bring forth. There's been a number of attempts through legislation at the congressional, state congressional level, to change the way those fees and the figures are determined. And some have been rather aggressive in lowering and making it a flat tuition rate of like $8,000 a student, which would probably be, what did we figure at the time, a $1.5 million savings to our school district alone. But there has been some relief in the last year through congressional action, I think. I think, maybe you can speak to that, but yes, that's where that number is. And it's a huge, as you point out, a very huge burden on our district, which is why we started our own Susquehanna cyber to allow students to have a cyber experience because some students thrive in that experience and that type of learning so that we would not be then having, we could instruct our own students not having to have that money leave our district and go to these schools that quite honestly do not have a lot of accountability for the monies that run them.
Now, does that tuition that you, that Susquehanna pays, does that also include paying for a student's internet and the computers that are offered for the charter schools that, you know, a lot of times you'll hear parents say, well, I don't have to buy my son or daughter a computer because the charter school, the cyber charter school is providing a computer and they're paying for our internet.
Yes.
So is that tuition also including the internet and the computer?
Yes, and we're not being charged more for that, those things, that the monies that go to those cyber charter schools do then provide for those students, the internet, the computers, the double monitors, the field trips, the, a lot of extra things that students get while they're there, that a lot of times students that are in public brick and mortar schools don't always get. I mean, we have a one-to-one, we're lucky to have a one-to-one initiative here with our devices that we provide for students, but we don't provide internet. You know, we don't, so there, it's, it can be a bit of a lure for people to want to go, that want to go into a cyber experience, to be able to offer that to them through the use of the funds that come out of the district.
Right.
And if I may, I don't think anyone here is arguing that we are against having someone have an opportunity to have a cyber education. What we are arguing, and Leanne and I have met with State Representative Shambal to even talk about this with him, is what we're arguing is it's not equitable. We're paying for all the teachers, we're paying for all of that, but also those students, their field trips are paid for. They also use that money, they can advertise, they can use that money to build a $30,000 caterpillar float to have in a parade somewhere, I'm not kidding, you know, to advertise their schools in reading. They use that money, their teachers often will get a bonus of several thousand dollars at the end of the year. We don't, we can't afford to do, we can't do that if we wanted to. And it's inequity, and I'm just going to talk special ed for a minute. Every special education student there gets funded this, we have to give them this certain amount of money per special education student for cyber school, period. Now, we have students in our school that are nonverbal, that are handicapped, that need one-on-one attention, and we have students in our school that have maybe a slight reading disability that may need a test read to them. And they are categorized accordingly, and we get funds from the state accordingly, depending upon the amount of services that they need. Obviously, a student who is severely autistic needs a greater amount of services than somebody who needs a test read to them. In the cyber school, if you just need a test read to you, they get the same reimbursement as they would get for a full-on, nonverbal student who is wheelchair-bound. It's the same flat amount regardless. So what a lot of us have argued is we're not against school choice. We're just against the inequity and their administrators making lots and lots and lots more money than any administrators in our local school districts. And they don't have brick and mortar, they don't have buses. So it's, it's a boat of contention, something we spent a lot of time on, thinking about, and I'm glad you brought it up. And we, Dr. Fox, every time we do budget, goes off on it with the community because the community needs to understand, $3 million is a lot of money. And Dr. Fox, I'm sure you have something to say.
Yeah, I think that's well said, you know, on all, on all accounts. And I do appreciate you asking that question because I think it's outstanding that you, that you picked up on that and sincerely appreciate that. We have to complete each year a form to the Pennsylvania Department of Education, I think it's PDE 363. And it's a pretty complex form, but it takes a look at some of our expenses and then it subtracts that and builds, each district has its own tuition rate that varies based on those expenses. So this year, I think our regular education rate is 13,000 and some change, closer to 14, and special education is 32,000. So you could see that dramatic increase per student. Now, again, I think it was also said that we don't pay for the ABCs, cyber charter schools do not have to account for students' ABCs. There's no athletics, there's no busing, and there's no cafeteria services. And we do, and yet their per pupil is significantly high. But yet I do see a real estate development that happened throughout. When you drive down Interstate 81, you'll see regional cyber charter centers being built and buildings, and the ownership of real property by cyber charters is confusing to me. Again, I'm not here saying cyber charter is a poor opportunity for students. I think we're here to say that a, that a complete rip off of the Band-Aid or envelope and looking deeply into how it's funded is much needed because this is a dinosaur of a, of a cyber charter law that needs significant reform. They did start to do and dip, they being the Senate and House, dip their toe in that a little bit, and we hope that, you know, they take a deep dive in. Because really, when it comes to taxpayers, you're paying this. Property owners are paying this. So for the amount of students that leave, you're paying that. And really, when we look at it and say, do you want tax relief? This is tax relief. Get this fixed and get it done and fix this antiquated formula and that comes tax relief. To give you another sense, I just pulled up an article that's there, and I don't know the validity of the article. It's from a magazine called The Keystone. I don't know it, but I do know some of the numbers here that speak to me. And it was May 17th of 2024. It reports, and again, I'm not going to say the validity of it, I'm just going to say the numbers because I was able to Google it quickly. They're saying that cyber charters throughout Pennsylvania, on the average, spent 68,750 last year on minor league sports teams advertising, 220,000 on search engine optimization, and 1.1 million on thank you grocery gift cards. What Dr. Jones was referencing with the bookworm was there's a famous picture of a bookworm that was from a cyber charter school that was in a Philadelphia parade a few years ago. They paid for that float, a very large float to advertise. We don't advertise and we don't have that advertising, nor do we hire lobbyists within our payroll as well as full-time employees. So all we're asking is if, you know, you're a public school, you, you're on the same public school playing field, certainly as the 500 other school districts throughout Pennsylvania, and the same rules apply to you if you're going to use that term, the conditions of public school.
I guess then it comes down to the deeper question of why do our kids leave? Are they leaving because, you bring up special education, do we have enough, and Ms. Bressi, this is not, not to throw you under the bus, because I think special education has vastly improved since you've been with the district, has incredibly improved. I know that we, as a district, lack paras. One of the ways that I feel if, if you offered adequate pay for paras instead of 13 or 14 dollars an hour, if you increased that or even maybe gave them benefits and put them on the bargaining unit, you would get paras instead of having to possibly rely on students here at the high school assisting the middle school teachers out. I know of a few students that go down to the middle school and they are student teachers or they're helping down at the special ed classes. I think at last count, I heard that the district only has three full-time paras and one is, two are here at the high school and one is down at the elementary school. And the rest, I don't know, maybe if we as a district offered more finances or more adequate pay for our special education department, maybe we could maintain more of our students here. And I think just the other deeper question is, why are some of our regular education students leaving? Aren't some of our teachers already spread thin? Can they truly accomplish teaching a cyber class on top of their regular education brick and mortar classes? When I know, I have seen for both of my sons, that teachers are not updating their grade books till a week after an assignment is turned in because our teachers are so spread thin, not just with their own job responsibilities, but there's personal lives that they also need to cater to, and some of our teachers do need to have second jobs because the pay is not adequate. So maybe that's another reason why we have students leaving the district because they aren't being supported enough here at Susquehanna. It's just food for thought.
No, and it's very, very, very good food for thought. And these are conversations we have all the time. Every, I think just about everything you just said, valid thoughts and concerns that we have all of the time and we wrestle with all of the time. I mean, these, these paraeducators are doing amazing things with children, but they can go to Sheetz and make more money, you know, pouring coffee. And it's just, we're limited in our finances. We did just recently, I gave them, I think, all like $2 an hour raise just within the last year, just because of that, just trying to keep them. And, and we've been wrestling all the time. Why would, why would children want to leave our district? And that's why we started to try to create our own cyber offerings. And our teachers, correct me if I'm wrong, who are teaching cyber, they actually have, period, built into their schedules for that and time to prepare for that, trying to do that. But your questions are all very valid, very good ones that we wrestle with all the time. That's the question. Why would anyone want to leave here? And if we can keep them, we've been working really, really hard to try to keep them. So, great, great questions.
But thank you for trying to explain to me what that 3 million was, because that was a rather large problematic number that I heard last week. So, thank you.
You probably noticed collectively, all of us, our blood pressure went up when you, when you pointed it out, because it's a bone of contention. Did someone else have a comment?
Yeah, I was just gonna, oh, I'm sorry. Did you?
And this is from personal experience, that I got into a heated argument, that most parents don't understand the building process behind sending someone to CCA or a cyber school. It was brought up that they think that their school tax pays for that service to CCA. And I, I think that's a big reason why parents don't understand how much of a cost it is to our school district and any other school district. It actually imposes on everybody that Dr. Fox can't say, no, we're not going to pay this. So for the audience listening tonight, the only way this will change is if legislation changes. And if nobody is arguing or a proponent for change, it's not going to. Right now, CCA is the largest public school in Pennsylvania. I think it's 38,000 or 60,000? 60,000 students are in CCA. And they're collecting the money on top of the taxes you, as a resident of Perry County, pay already for your education, for the school district. And the added 3 million is on top of that.
And I, I do know that the CCA teachers, they don't, they are no longer a part of the teacher unions. So that's the one, I guess, small factor. They're no longer, no, they're no longer a part of the teacher unions, but they do offer larger salaries to accommodate the, the, I guess, the pay loss for not being a part of the pension and the teacher union or anything.
They are, they are part of the pension. I do know they, they still get pension via state employees.
Once they reach tenure, but they're no longer union saved and, but I mean, that also goes to special education. A lot of our parents, they get all up in arms, well, I don't see a change in my student. Well, it takes, it takes at least one school quarter to see a change that gets implemented with special education. And if a district, not just Susquehanna, but if any district doesn't have enough special education personnel and a district is scrambling and they scramble and scramble, even I work at Central Dauphin, we all, none of us have enough people to support our, all of our special education kiddos. If parents don't see that change by tomorrow or by yesterday, parents become up in arms. But there has to be a patience and a given, a give and take. So I think there's also transparency that needs to happen between districts and parents. And that's, you know, like you said, parent, parents and community members don't understand their taxes that they're already paying, they're not leaving Susquehanna, they're still paying for here. But they don't understand that that bill's still going elsewhere. So, yeah, it's all about communication and transparency and everyone's a little thick-headed.
I think also, when you were asking though, why students are leaving Susquehanna, I think, you know, going, stemming back to the fact that, that there are students and parents that want their children to have a cyber education, we, we can't compete with the offerings of these cyber charter schools. We just can't. I mean, so if you're a parent trying to decide, I'm gonna, I want my child to attend cyber charter, a cyber school, cyber schooling, here I can get two monitors, free internet of 100 and some dollars, you know, allotment or so many hundreds of dollars a year to pay for the internet in the house. I know I'll have the field trips paid for. And on top of that, my student can still be an athlete at Susquehanna because they have to by law. So they don't give up any of that. The only thing they give up is the social events that we have here where they will not graduate as a Susquehanna student, they can't attend homecoming and prom on their own, they could come as a guest. But that's where, that's the dilemma we're in. We are bound by law to provide sports and everything else to them, and at the same time, we're also bound by, by law to pay for the tuition. And they're able to take that money and spend it to lure the students there. So it's difficult to compete, we can't compete. Even if we have the best cyber charter school we can possibly offer, those other elements we just can't provide. And so that's where I think we lose most of the students. I don't know that we lose a lot of our special education students to cyber, because I would have to argue that a special education offering at a brick and mortar school will always be superior to that, that can be provided through cyber charter. But that being said, I think that's where we lose students, just those students that just want to be part of a cyber experience. So.
And the irony at the end of it is, when they graduate, even though the districts pay for the entire education, their diploma is from that cyber school, not Susquehanna. That's the irony of everything.
But Jim does bring up a good point. It will be done through legislation and it can't, the voices really just can't come from the school boards. It has to come from the greater community to make that known, that this has got, there's got to be some reform. And that, that starts at the ballot box, really. So, thank you.
Any other public comments?
I just want to thank the board for putting the video board in the stadium. I've had lots of talks with the team coming about, we've been trying to figure out some cool things to make over there with it, and it is really cool. They do like to drive at movie night, they do, like our team's away on a state tournament, they play and stream the game on the video board and all that, it's a whole thing there. So track meets instant results, and all these different things you can do. You know, we can do definitely some of those type of great money for the club. And we did start hosting some big state games this year. We've done a lot of pubs, we've got the PIA double A. They want to come back next year, they want to use us for multiple games. I actually said no to about three of them, because they want to do back-to-back first night, they want to come in on Black Friday and have another game. They asked us for the entire, like, two or three weeks, and with this video board, I think it's going to really bring that home and they give us a really good reputation. I just want to thank you. I just want to thank you.
All right, and I don't think there are any comments online as far as public comments, so may I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
For your adjournment.